Counsel, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clark.
Here.
Well done.
Here, I am here.
Counselor Perry?
Present.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Counselor Janik?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor DiMediris?
Present.
Counselor Burke?
Present.
Counselor Viera?
Here.
Thank you, all present.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Approval of town council minutes, August 23rd, 2021, regular session, Counselor Perry abstains absent. October 23rd, 2021, executive session, Counselor Perry abstains absent. August 30th, 2021, special workshop, Consulors DiMediris and Perry abstain absent. Acknowledged receipts and minutes from boards, commissions, and committees. Conservation Committee, Commission Two, Economic Development Commission Seven. Acknowledged receipts of reports, Town Administrator, Department Monthly Report, August 2021, Police and Fire Department Overtime Reports, August 2021, Jen Celiciano, Town Planner and Administrative Officer Reports of Activities of the Planning Department and Planning Board for June, July, and August 2021. Acknowledged receipts of correspondence from Nelson Rees, Tivon Facility Request Denial, referred to Town Administrator, and approval of tax assessor abatements, $3,957.05. Would any of the consuls like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Counselor Burke?
Item 4B1, the minutes from the Conservation Commission for a question.
4B1. Anyone else? Like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 4B1. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second. Sorry.
Motion's been made by Counselor Edwards, second by Counselor Burke, all those in favor? Unanimous.
No, abstain. I abstain because I wasn't here for those.
Because it says that, Joe, you can still vote because it states that.
I abstain anyway.
4B1, Conservation Commission. Counselor Burke?
So, just a quick question, and I know the Chair of the Commission isn't here, but Chris, maybe you can either answer or find out. Find my favorite again, there is. So, on... The 615 minutes under Item 6, at the bottom of that page, they talk about Main Roads Sidewalk Maintenance and Repair Policies, which are probably a good discussion, I just don't understand how that fits into scope when I look at their duties and responsibilities and also look at the state statute, how that fits into their scope.
Well, we've...
And there could be something I'm missing.
No, we've had this problem in the past, and it is the state that's responsible for these sidewalks.
That is state property. But I'll look into, that was all done with the American Recovery Act as far as Main Road went, but... And I'm just... Those are not that old. Yeah, my only question is, is it within the scope of the Conservation Commission to be looking into that as opposed to you or some other committee? Okay, I'll look into it.
And then, and they assume that it's a state vote, but it seems the care of the sidewalks was given to the town, that's not particularly true. It says the state's not keeping up with that.
No, I think we would report to the state issues that we know.
But you are right, it's kind of weird that it's under the Conservation Committee.
So with that, I make a motion, we accept those minutes for the Conservation Commission, Item 4B2.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Burke, second by Counselor Janik. Yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
What's going to be done about the sidewalks?
Chris is going to look into... I'll go look at the jurisdictional issues on whether or not the Conservation has the purview, it actually be looking at that as a matter, but more importantly, what is the issue? If there are issues with state road sidewalks, what is the process for us to follow? So I'll reach out to DOT to find out exactly what we should be doing.
Also, on Cliff Street in my area...
Cliff Street?
Who's Cliff? Cliff, just before the book.
That's the town road then.
Who's responsible for cleaning up around the telephone poles?
Donna, can you use your mic, please?
Who's responsible for cleaning up around the telephone poles? It's really a mess. Is it the people that live there, or is it the telephone company?
I would assume it's, most people take care of it from their property. They mow their grass, they, you know, they mow right up to the road, and they take care of those types of structures.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
But I will look to see if it's, you know, it could be an area where there's no house or no residents.
Oh, no, there's a house.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Board of Licensing, licensing advertised. Jim Long Sports Kitchen LLC, 300 Industrial Way, approval of liquor license expansion, subject to meeting all legal requirements, and approval of entertainment license expansion, subject to meeting all legal requirements. I know Jim's here hiding over there. Only hiding to me because I can't say.
I was trying to hide.
You can sit down, Jim, if you like. So this is continued from two weeks ago, because we did, well, maybe three weeks ago, we did have questions, so we asked Joan to have you come and participate. Would anybody like to start off, or want me to?
I guess I can.
Go ahead.
So just so everybody knows, I went down to Longflex, spent one hour with you.
Yes.
Got the tour, got the rundown of what he would like to do, why he would like to do it. Could you, I guess maybe we should have Jim give us a synopsis of what it is you want to do, why you want to do it.
So basically, I just want to expand the liquor license that we have upstairs. We have a lot of tournaments coming in. We had a national cornhole tournament come in, they request them drinking beers while they're actually playing. We do a lot of baseball, we added batting cages and stuff, so we have parents there for three hours while their kids are being trained, and the parents want the option of sitting and watching their kids on the bleachers drinking beer, wine, whatever the case may be. We had a roller derby, Providence Roller Derby came to the town, I believe, two years ago, and actually tried to get a liquor license for there, but they couldn't have enough time to advertise it, that was all on them. So we're trying to, I don't want to say I lose a lot of opportunity, but I do, and the fact that we already have the alcohol there, we're already insured, the building's, you know, equipped for it, for me to add alcohol to serve the courts downstairs is actually very simple. So we're looking to just expand it on the first floor only, not the second, not the third, just the first floor.
Next?
So, yeah, go ahead, Dan.
So I visited with Jim too, I think Jim entertained all of us. And one thing I just wanted to point out is that you would have to, as you and I had discussed, you would have to maintain legal serving and, you know, safe serve and all of that, and it really is in your best interest to make sure that minors are not served and that people are not over-served, so I think, you know, as a responsible businessman, you really had pointed that out to me very strongly, that...
Nothing's going to change. I'm not looking to get $5 from a minor and then lose my liquor license. The reality of it is, if I make any mistakes, and Chief Jones lets you guys know, I have to come in front of you and I lose the liquor license. So it's not like it's a game, or it's a gamble, or a risk, it's we're going to do everything that state requires us to, the town requires us to. So we already are responsible, if we get into a bigger event, I have to work with Chief Jones, period, on having the police there and stuff like that. So we're going to do everything we're supposed to do.
He does have a safe serve alcohol.
Yes.
Yeah.
I do have a question. Now, the parents can watch from the upper bar.
They can, but the seats are in the way, so we can only have so many people in that, there's only two bleachers. So they can't watch any baseball, they can't watch any basketball or hockey, they're really right over the soccer field. So the rest of the restaurant has tables, so that's the problem we had last year with the baseball people, they were standing in between seats to watch their kids because it was that important.
Yeah, I was under the impression you were going to only do this when there was adults' stuff going on, not when there was kids.
Well, the kids are playing, the adults are the ones that are going to be watching, so the kids are on the...
Yeah, but the kids are on the field, and the adults are drinking, watching them.
On the field, so alcohol will go on the field. Correct, correct. So it's for the adults.
I didn't think that's wise. You don't think there's more increased opportunity for fathers to fight over what teams win? Like, I've been there.
Why only fathers?
Mothers, mothers. Parents get very worked up during all of this, and I've been there when police had to walk me out.
Yeah, we will control that.
So I'm a little, I'm kind of surprised you want to do that during kids' games.
We serve alcohol, we've only been doing it for six months, and we haven't had any problems yet, so we're not a bar where people are going to go there to actually get drunk and do shots and stuff like that. They have to drive their kids home.
Yeah.
So it's a responsibility that the adults are taking, and that's on them.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
So it's controlled, you know, we shut people off if we have to, just like any other bar, but you know...
So you can have one drink and still drive your kids home, your alcohol level will be all right?
Yeah. I mean, Dave and Buster's has a bar right inside the...
No, I'm just asking, I'm just concerned about that as a parent, as an athletic parent who's been to all these things. Joe?
Yeah, I'm noticing hours of operation 12:59, why not 1 o'clock or 2 a.m. is it?
Because...
Is there a reason why that's on there?
I think that was like a legal term to like the...
Yeah, there is a reason.
There is a reason, I don't know that exact reason, but I just think it was like 12:59.
And the other question was, number of attendees, 2,000, I'm assuming that's all day long, not just one time, correct?
Correct, so all of those numbers...
That's part of your entertainment license.
Yes, and all of that is to code with how many people we're allowed, and each section of the building has to match how many parking places we have outside. So everything matches, that's a code thing, so we, there's no way around that, so...
I think that was one of the questions the last time, was 2,000, and everybody was like, is that all day, is that one time, so...
It's throughout the day.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
And this would be serving liquor inside only, not outside?
Inside only.
No one's allowed to walk outside with a glass of beer or whatever?
Nope.
Nor events outside.
Nor events outside.
No, so I'm working on the inside, okay? And then we're going to work on the outside next summer, doing a touch-a-truck event or something like that, like we did, and having a beer tent and a band, so this is strictly 100% indoors only.
So Jim, thank you also for the tour, since I had never been there, it was very...
I'm probably the only one that didn't get a tour, but I've been there so often, I guess.
It's a fantastic facility.
Thank you.
I think you've done a nice job. I think that helped me, and some of the discussion helped me with the key concerns I had about the expansion of the liquor license. I still am a little bit hung up on, I'll be honest, with the idea, and my, it's, I'll pose a question in a minute, of the events and some of the things you described, you know, so for example, you described, and I think they were just off the top of your head, concerts like Cheap Trick or Joan Jett or something like that, which many, most of these people know them, many of the younger people probably don't know that.
So when we get into the actual events, we have to work that out because that's a completely different animal, I have to work with both Chief, Police, and Fire, and that would be coming to you guys almost like a special event. We'll still have the alcohol, all that will be in place, but anything like that, I have to go by however many people we're serving, so if there's 500 people, then I believe I have to have two police officers in the building at the exact time, and if it goes up ever so many hundred people, more police have to be there, and fire.
So, two things with that, I think, and I appreciate how you talked to me about the parking and how it's designed and everything, and it's still unconcerned, that event like that is probably going to have 500 to 1,000 people, and you're going to want that many anyway to make it work. And you're probably going to have more cars than what you might anticipate, but that's, you know, it's zone for it, so that's fine. But Michael, would that be accurate, that if we pass the commercial entertainment license, you'd still have to come back indoors, you'd still have to come back for special permitting?
See, I'm confused, so the entertainment license, is it for your concerts?
It is, but the concerts have their own set of rules, so when I go to a certain amount of people, so what we're talking about right now is a jiffy, me having a cornhole tournament coming, couple hundred people on the field, and we're serving them. When I get into concerts where we're going to have 1,000 people, then I actually have different guidelines that I have to go by, completely, like with Chief Jones, I have to sit down with him and the chief, and we have to come up with a game plan. They tell me how it's going to be done.
See, I never thought you were going to, like, I've been hearing from the original concept, and I never imagined you were going to have concerts.
It was never an option until a band said, hey, would you ever entertain? So to be honest with you...
Because it's a concert hall now, and that's not what we thought we were...
Right. Newport, the Yachting Center, Newport Yachting Center, because they can't do their concerts anymore, so the Sunset Festival and all that stuff, they said, would I ever entertain it? Because we can hold it. So it's classy, it's come in, you do your music, you leave, so anything with a group, a certain amount of people above, has to go through the police station and the fire department first.
And I hear what you're saying, I just would like to solicit...
Yeah, can't we just give the entertainment license as he...
As he needs it?
As he needs it. Like, if he wants to give a concert.
Right, if he wanted to do a sports tournament, whether it's cornhole or roller derby or something like that...
That wouldn't be under entertainment.
That wouldn't be under entertainment, so he could still do that, and if we...
So, this one, so Section 51-21, no business organization or individual shall maintain, operate, or conduct any public entertainment within the town without first obtaining a license from the town council or the town clerk is set forth. All right, commercial business, which this is, indoor public entertainment, no indoor public entertainment, no person, corporation, or organization doing business in the town, whether or not holding a holiday selling license, viculating license, indoor alcoholic beverage license, shall conduct or operate indoor public entertainment without first obtaining a public entertainment license. The license granted hereunder shall not permit such entertainment to exist beyond the authorized time, since viculating or Sunday selling license, in the case of an alcoholic beverage license, entertainment shall not extend past midnight unless otherwise determined by the council. So it really doesn't make a distinction between a one-day license or a forever license.
As long as it's indoors.
As long as it's indoors. If you go outside, it's a different, and then there's other requirements, as you talked about.
To come back later for...
No, as far as the police, all police officers in a fire shall be paid at the prevailing hourly rate, and then the applicant shall meet the following requirements, and it's proof of insurance, off-street parking area if necessary, and then all trash and...
But will that, so if he books a band, if we pass the commercial entertainment license and he books a band, he doesn't have to come back to us for that?
No.
Okay, that's what I thought, that's what I thought. You still have to work with the police.
Yes.
But you wouldn't have to come back to us, that's what I wanted to clarify.
We also have a right to revoke that license if there's issues as well, so...
But couldn't we do a single entertainment license for every time he comes with a different band? No, I don't want him to have a live concert every weekend. I think that's going to be very disruptive in that area, so what I'm saying is...
Well, it doesn't make a distinction between one, you know, whether it's a one day or for the duration, so...
So he would still have to have the commercial license even if he was coming back, even if he...
He doesn't have to come back, though.
I know.
Right.
But we still have to grant him the commercial license for him to do it, I think, is what you're saying?
Look, I have no problem coming back, because I have to do it with the police and fire anyway. So I have no problem coming back with a game plan, saying this is the plan I'm doing. No one's going to hear the music from inside the building, we already have bands in the restaurant, so there's a band every Saturday.
I'm just worried about the traffic.
Yeah, so...
That's a lot of people.
So I have no problem coming back with a game plan, saying, hey, this is what we're going to do, because it has to be approved by police and fire, period. So it's not like I can skip a step because if they say no...
Well, Chief Jones could also require, in addition to the number of people that he would have to have inside building, also traffic control on Fisher Road, and getting on to 24.
Right.
So that would all be part of, this is what you've got to conform to, to do this, whatever it is. And as far as getting approval for every one of these things, concerts and the like aren't going to come out of the blue.
That's the problem.
From New Hampshire, like happened with the cornhole thing, saying, oh my God, we have no place to go, could you take us? So he'll have adequate time...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm not, it was more of, going back to Jim's statement, what I heard him say was that he had to come back to us every time he had an event. If he wants to, that's great, I appreciate that, but I just was trying to clarify that if we pass the commercial license, he does not, it's not, doesn't require him to come back to us for every event, that's all.
I agree that, the part that I read, then if you look at the license application for information required, then it seems to suggest that you do have to come back every time, so...
But that's just for, that's for just concerts, though, right?
Correct, that is right.
Because you're going to, you're going to, logistically, you're going to have more cornhole tournaments, soccer tournaments, those type of things.
That's what all of this is about.
Right, and then the concerts here and there, that's not going to be the majority of the time. So he's not going to have to come back for every cornhole tournament?
For concert, he would be, so the days...
Just concerts, it would, I think.
Yeah, the days and hours in which the proposed public entertainment is to be conducted, the nature and type of activities that occur, the number of musicians or entertainers that will participate in the event, so that's clearly indicates that if you're going to have entertainment, like you're going to have a singer or a band, or somebody could come back.
So a cornhole tournament would not be entertainment?
Would not be entertainment, well, I guess if you...
A singing cornhole tournament?
It's more of an event, it's more of a competition, right? I would consider that a competition more than I would consider it entertainment.
I would just like to leave tonight knowing crystal clear, everything that I've been doing for the past two years, I can continue doing, serving alcohol to the people that are coming in.
Except you're going to do it downstairs.
Downstairs.
So it'll be more people you serving alcohol.
So is there a limit of person, people-wise, that there creates a barrier or a bar for to come in? I mean, that's, when do I tell the police they have to go if you're having a cornhole tournament and you have 700 people? I, you know, I don't...
They have those guidelines, those guidelines are in there, the police have that, so if it's 400 or whatever that number is, it's already exists, the law already exists.
In what law?
In our...
Because usually it goes to approval to the chief, and I didn't, he just goes with what he thinks.
Because when we first started discussing this, it was about events, it wasn't a full-blanket liquor license on the first floor. It was going to be when you had these events.
Right.
Right, but now...
And now it's morphed into, I can serve liquor all the time, and the chase is on for the town to figure out what you're doing.
Right, and it all started off, we're just going to get a beer and wine for downstairs, but then we couldn't, you know, the chief was like, you're going to separate the two?
Oh, you're not just doing beer and wine downstairs?
Well, we'll do whatever, the alcohol is going to be extended down, we're only going to serve beer and wine downstairs, but what happens if someone came down with a Roman Coke and they want to go watch their kid? We wouldn't know the difference, so that's, that's why we're trying to keep it simple, that's why they said just keep one license and expand it. So we're only going to be serving beer and wine downstairs. But we have, you know, we have baseball three nights a week, all day Sunday, so those are the customers we're trying to go after.
You have likely to put that restriction in the license if it's expanded, so if the license will say beer and wine only on the first floor?
That's what we're serving, but I can't stop anybody from...
I understand that.
Absolutely, yeah.
So that's a, that's a good condition of the expansion that you can put.
You could stop them from coming down, you'd have to monitor, you'd have to have somebody that monitors.
Then I would have to be like, you know, what's in your plastic cup, and then how, you know...
Well, the bartender knows what he's pouring in the cup.
Yeah.
It's more sexy.
It's not the speed form, it's...
It's exiting the restaurant. It's walking down the set of stairs, you know, the person at the bottom, I mean, it's easy if it's beer, if it's a wine or a cocktail, it could look like red wine.
Look, my goal is, I don't want them downstairs drinking, I want them in the restaurant eating and drinking, that's where my money's at. But at the end of the day, if they can go down and have a couple beers because they're stuck there for three hours and they're sitting on a bleacher watching their kid play...
Yeah, but that's the way parenting is, and I did five hours and didn't have a beer, so...
But did you have the option?
No, I didn't have the option, I probably wouldn't have done it if I had the option, but my question is, how many parking spaces do you have?
300 paved and another 150 grass.
So 550, so if you have an event, a concert with 1,000 people, where are they going to park?
We're not there yet, I'm not here to have...
Well, that's why I want to hesitate, given the entertainment license, because I'm worried about these concerts. This could be over 1,000 people, there's nowhere to park, I've been to Touch a Truck, and they were parked all the way up Industrial Way, and it was, it was a lot of cars, and there wasn't 1,000 cars there, so...
You're not going to have 1,000 cars for 1,000 people, though, people are going to come together.
No, but still, you only have 450 parking spaces.
Right.
So...
You could have 1,000, you could have 500 cars, or...
I think, Jim, on the entertainment license, to the extent you're going to have a concert or an event, I think, by the way I read the orders, you have to apply for each event for that.
I'm okay with that.
That gives them discretion.
Yeah, it's just, I'm a little concerned that this might get out of hand, and if we grant it, there's very little thing we can do, except bring you in and have, and talk to you about it, and revoke the license, and I prefer not to do it that way, I prefer to be more cooperative with it. But I just worry that you only have 450 parking spaces, and I'm not sure what a concert is going to be.
And I had the same question, and Jim walked me through very loosely the guidelines that are used, and if you do four people to a car at 450, that's 1,800. I know you're not going to always average four people to a car, but that's...
But that's not the way we've always done it, though.
So my building is approved for 2,500 people throughout the day, and it meets...
Throughout the day.
All the parking lot, yep, so it meets all of that. So I don't know how they came up with that, but that's what it meets. I'm looking to do concerts probably next year, I have no problem coming back next year. Hopefully by then, we'll have the ice hockey building worked out, and we're going to add another 450 parking places that's attached to that.
Right, I'm thinking that too. That's why I said, let's wait and see how things progress.
I'm good with that, I'm good with that.
And then if you come to us and you want to have a concert, and we know that you have increased parking, or just, just the band itself, let's see what that brings in. The kids aren't going to go see some of the bands Mike's mentioning.
Sorry, I don't like...
I have one question, I'm sure you've worked this out. You already know, if you did have a concert, where in the building it would be, where the bandstand would be?
Yes.
Where?
On the basketball court.
I was just thinking about it, okay.
I'm sure you've mapped this out. How many seats could you have?
Probably up to 1,000.
You could have as many as 1,000.
It's a big area, Joe.
Yeah, I know.
Well, no, I understand.
It's 20,000 square feet, just on that.
I was there when they built it.
So, Jim, I want to, I want to make sure I didn't mishear, are you suggesting that you're willing to hold off on the commercial license for now?
The entertainment.
Yeah, the commercial entertainment license.
All I'm looking to do is serve beer and wine downstairs, I don't want to cap myself, so if somebody else walks downstairs with a different drink, I don't get in trouble, so that's all I'm trying to do.
Right, and Michael, if we did not approve the commercial entertainment license tonight, it doesn't prohibit him from doing the sports events, like, okay?
With the understanding that's a, that's an event, that's a, that's a competition, I guess you call it, not an event, right? I think, I think the entertainment license presumes that you're gonna have a concert or singer or some kind of comedian or something like that, right?
I mean, I've been doing tournaments ever since I've opened, so.
I'm gonna say.
I just wanna, I wanna make sure we're not gonna restrict you from that, that's all.
This tournament's going there every week, every weekend, all right, any other questions from anyone?
No, I, just a comment, though, because you're not the only sports arena in the state that serves alcohol to watch their kids' games, so Rhode Island, what's it called, Teamworks in Warwick, they've been doing it.
I know.
Because my kids played there, and we would get pizza and beer to watch them.
I would, in the restaurant, but I wouldn't be sitting on the bleachers, but that's, it's just me, that's okay. All right, so do I have a motion?
So moved.
This is for the liquor license.
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Expansion of the liquor license.
Yes, I know, I just remembered.
Hold it, Joe.
All right, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to add anything or ask any questions? Doesn't look like it, going once, going twice, anyone would like to come up to the microphone? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, Joe.
Yep, I'll make a motion.
Motion to expand the liquor license.
Yes.
Do I have a?
With the stipulation that it's inside only, and beer and wine only.
Served on the.
Served.
My words, exactly.
Second.
Second, two motions been made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Against? Six, one.
You're against?
Yes. All right, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, guys.
Do, do we need to say anything about the, um, we'll just table?
We're gonna table the, well.
To a future date.
To a way future date.
Thanks, Jim.
We're tabling entertainment.
If we just got a motion to table.
Yep, I need a motion to table the approval of the entertainment license for Longblades.
Second.
Motion been made, second, all those in favor?
Can you make a motion?
Thank you. Meredith Almi Brower, Tiverton Farmers Market, Harvest Market on Sunday, October 17th, from 12 to 4:00 p.m. at Pardon Gray Preserve, 3460 Main Road. Hi, Meredith.
Hi, how are you?
Good. So, you have on the agenda approval of sound variance, but we're gonna cancel that, 'cause the clerk decided that, the office decided you don't need a sound variance for this, so this would be just approval of special event license. Do you wanna describe a little bit of what it's about?
Sure, I don't know if any of you have been to the Farmers Market?
I have.
We finished a full year in June, so we're in our second year, and we've been doing some specialty markets, so we are partnering with the Tiverton Land Trust, and they've invited us to do a market on Sunday, October 17th, at Pardon Gray, 12 to 4:00, load in, load out beforehand, load it after, right now we have about 42 vendors who are interested, 20 of which are food, everybody's got their permits, the music's gonna be singer-songwriters, so it's just gonna be, it's not gonna be there a concert, it's gonna be like ambiance, so, yeah, we're gonna do a pumpkin field in the front, the vendors will be in that back lawn, parking will be where the Pardon Gray happens, it's more geared towards adults, it's not kid-centric, the Land Trust is gonna do two nature walks, and the Plain Air Portsmouth Artist Guild, Plain Air Guild, is gonna come in and they're gonna have artists around painting during the day.
I see members of the Land Trust, and I'm, and I, that was one of my questions, are they totally on board with this, but I did read they were, so.
I think so, they give you permission, and, yeah.
Okay, all right, any questions? Identit, oh, I gotta open up the public hearing?
Nope, there's no, no public hearing, I took, taking the sound variance.
Sound variance, it's on.
All right, I gotta talk to you about that, though, 'cause I'm, I'm kinda confused why the first one was, 'cause it wasn't.
Liquor license.
Liquor license is advertised in the second one.
Okay, I got it, okay.
Sorry.
You guys are confusing me tonight, okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made by Council Perry, second by Council Burke, any further discussion? All those in favor? Good luck, I'll see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, yeah, I'm confused, because.
Not commercial.
It should just say it on here, so I know what I'm doing. You gotta give me clues, okay?
Cheat sheets.
Cheat sheets, public hearing, approval of proposed amendments to Tiverton Code of Ordinance, Chapter 7, Tobacco, Section 7-4, license application fee required for tobacco dealers, license to expire on November 30th, who would like to speak on this? Is this you?
Yep, Madam President, this is just a change to Chapter 7, Section 7-4, the ordinance that's current has the license expiring in the month of February, end of February of each year, that was changed many years ago, the Code of Ordinance was not updated, so this is just changing it to, on November 30th, to be in compliance with what we currently have support.
Any questions?
I got a question.
Go ahead, Donna.
They, they have to pay a fee, right? So instead of being able to go to February to pay a fee, now they have to pay it November, sooner than.
They're already doing it.
It's already doing it.
They're already, oh, okay.
The fee schedule was changed.
Yeah, they're already, yeah, I see what you're saying, but they're already doing it.
Yeah, there was already a year where it was a partial license, and to get it started up in November to match other licenses, so this is just to make it us in compliance.
All right, thanks for clarifying.
I know it's a public hearing, thank you, I know that, anyone in the audience like to speak on this issue? Anyone in the audience like to speak on this issue? I'm gonna close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move approval of the modification to Section 7-4, to November 30th instead of February?
Second.
Motion been made by Council Burke, second by Council Janik, any further discussion? All those in favor? Approval of proposed amendment to Tiverton Code of Ordinance, Chapter 38, Environment, Section 38, 122, sound variance to update land evidence records only when a long-term permanent sound variance is approved, Joan?
Yes, when I looked at the ordinance, I was surprised to find that we should be recording all sound variances the way it was worded in land evidence, and I think the intention was to only record it if it was, there was filing for a permanent sound variance, so the special event licenses, usually they also incorporate a sound variance in many cases, and we have not been recording those one or two-day events where you approve a sound variance, forever, so, so I just wanna make sure that we're in compliance, and would like to change the language if you wanna go with this, or strike recording it in land evidence altogether, the choice is yours, but I don't know if we would ever have a case for a long-term sound variance, but.
I don't think we ever have since I've been here.
Exactly, but I wouldn't want to discount it, the possibility, so.
Any discussion from the council? I'd like to open the public hearing, anyone in the audience like to comment on the subject? One more time, anyone like to comment on the subject? I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move approval of the change to Section 38-122, Sound Variances, subsection D, to add the underlined when the application is requesting a long-term slash permanent sound variance.
So, second.
Motion's been made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Approval of proposed amendment to Tiverton Code of Ordinance, Chapter 78, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 7831, trucks exceeding four tons in overall weight prohibited from using certain streets to update East Hooper to Hooper, so we already discussed this, we just have a street change.
Change, name change.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience that'd like to open the public hearing? Anyone like to comment? I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move approval of the change to Section 78-31, removing the term east before Hooper Street.
Second.
Motion's been made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Approval of proposed amendment to Tiverton Code of Ordinance, Appendix A Zoning Nautical, excuse me, 14 solar energy systems that would allow for roof, mount, and ground system for residential and commercial development, letter from Bruce Hathaway, before we go any further, we did not.
I can't hear back here, you're not speaking into the microphone, you got your hand in front of your mouth.
Is that better, Peter? Okay. Before we go any further, we, this was not advertised correctly, so we are going to put this on.
I put Kelly's.
The solar ordinance.
Seventy.
Seventy, thank, thank you, Kelly, so we're going to not be able to discuss this this evening, the solicitor may wanna add something to this, or?
Well, it won't count as official public hearing because it wasn't advertised for three consecutive weeks, as required by the zoning code, but if the council, people may be here who wanna comment on the proposal, it's up to you.
I would rather just wait until we have the actual meeting, if that's all right with everybody, because at this point, there is also a question on whether we should send this back to the planning board, or?
Yeah, so the other issue that I had is, when this was, when the original ordinance was set back to, to us back, and it was before I was here, but.
It was 2019?
Yeah, 2019, the planning board chairwoman sent us a, at the 11, 25, 2019 meeting, sent us a letter with the changes of the, with the recommendation proposals for solar energy system ordinance, that letter has been passed, is that in a packet?
Yes.
We should have it before you today, so I think I was under the impression that that, that the planning board had met the requirements of the ordinance when they sent it to us and made all the appropriate findings of fact, but if you look at the actual letter transmitted to us, they're actually asking for, at the time, a meeting, you know, to go over some more of the ordinance and whatnot, so statutorily, they're, they are required to give us a recommendation and to make certain findings of fact regarding the compliance with the comprehensive plan and other things, when you read that letter of November 20, 2019.
It's the first time I've ever seen this, okay, just as a matter of fact.
When you, when you see that letter, well, if you notice, it was to the council president at the time, so I know you weren't the council president, if you read that letter, they clearly did not meet their statutory requirements at that, at the time, at the proposed ordinance that was being considered, so my recommendation would be this, we take the current ordinance, send it back to the planning board, ask them to look at it, make their recommendations.
Facts, too.
Fact, finding facts, again, they're only recommendations, and make the appropriate findings of fact, and then send it back to us for final adoption, and they have a time limit, I believe, for which they can do that if we send it to them tonight.
It is 45 days, Mike.
So the, from what I understand from the statute is that if we start the clock tonight, then it's six, we have a total of 65 days before we, within which we have to have a public hearing.
Correct.
Within that, there's a 45-day timeframe for the planning board to meet the statutory requirements around the recommendations, and, and there's a whole host of things within that statute that they have to come back to us and tell us whether or not it meets those pieces, so we need that in 45 days, and then we can, I would suggest we start scheduling it now for somewhere around 65 days out, and then from there.
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing, and then from there, we would have 45 days after the public hearing to make a determination.
Correct.
Of how to proceed, that determination could be to continue to work on it.
Correct.
Okay.
So, at this point, the action is to send the current.
The one that you, current, it's what's in your, the draft to the.
To them, and then they have 45 days to respond to it, okay, and then we'll schedule a public hearing. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes, and that's according to the, the law, I was just wondering, there's so much information, it's so important, it's not that.
It's not that we need to rush this, it just needs to be right.
Right.
And, because down the road, that would be a terrible legacy to leave our children and grandchildren to a big fat mess, so I was just thinking that, after it goes to the planning board, and maybe we should have a workshop, and go line by line by line and make sure all of these things are in there, checked off, and made sure that it's done right, rather than.
I think that's what the planner and the attorney's responsibility is, is to look at it and make sure that.
I know, but we do have to approve it.
Right, right, and during the public hearings, they can.
We could do that, we have already looked at this once, right, we had a workshop, we didn't have a workshop a couple weeks ago.
Yes, we did have a workshop.
All right, I just wanna make sure that we.
But there's plenty of time, if you wanna amend it, there's plenty of time between now and.
I guess I'll check it off myself, I'd just.
No, 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 it's all right, like, we can do it if you'd like, but right now, they have 45 days to send it back to us, so we can see what.
Are, are they gonna put it in red, what they put in there that's, that's suggestions and?
They do not change, they don't make changes, they just comment on the, they can recommend changes, but they, they comment on what's sent to them.
So they don't make.
Donna, within the state statute, there are specific.
I need it like highlighted or something.
There are specific findings that they have to give back to us in the statute.
Findings of fact, and it also has to meet the comp plan, so they have to.
Consistent with the comp plan.
Consistent with the comp plan.
All right, I guess I'll just have to do my homework.
So it's actually on the agenda for the planning board tomorrow night, for the first, first time, and I'm sure they'll probably schedule another meeting, as long as they can have as many meetings they want within the 45-day period, so.
Right, all right.
I did that as precaution, because I knew that the amendment, the changes that we made at the council level after that workshop or during the workshop were different than what the planning board had sent to us, but I was under the impression that the planning board had sent a letter with the.
With the recommendations.
With the recommendations and the specific findings, and with the good work of the clerk today, she sent me this November 20, 2019 memo from the planning board, the planning board chair, and clearly, they didn't meet their requirements, in fact, they were asking, at that time, they were asking for another, another shot at the apple, for another meeting to go with it, so, so they now have to meet the requirements of the statute.
Okay, there's no action I need to take.
No.
Okay, is that okay with, is there any further discussion, any questions? All right, thank you.
Does he just have a general question?
Okay.
Can you guys?
Well, you need to come use the mic, no, you, you need.
I'm coming up.
Come on down.
I wish you guys could come up. Can you review what's going on tomorrow with the planning board, is that a public hearing for, again, for the town?
The planning board, well.
Yeah, it's always, whether they have a public hearing or not, it's up to them, I assume that they're gonna have discussions among themselves, and they'll probably have a public hearing within the next 45 days.
It's, it's not advertised as a public hearing.
No.
It's whether or not they take public comment.
Is it required, because are we gonna, you're just gonna give a recommendation, basically?
No, 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 they're not gonna make a final determination at that point.
They're gonna give a recommendation to the town council?
Yes.
That's why.
They have to do so within 45 days, whether they do that tomorrow night or another night, I don't know.
So, their meeting, basically, is just gonna be a recommendation to the town council?
It's all they're required to do.
Okay, that's, it should be on the agenda, can I guess, I assume.
I think it's down as a review, so as an initial review.
I wouldn't anticipate, Peter, that they're gonna do it, I mean, I don't wanna speak for Susan, but it's a, it's a lot of work for what they have to give us back, it's not just saying, change this item here and change that, they have to look at how it fits in the comprehensive plan.
I understand, I was on the planning board, and I get my personal opinions about what's written down, there's some errors there, or some opinions that I don't think it's proper, but if it's just gonna be a recommendation tomorrow.
Well, it's not gonna, they're not gonna make a decision tomorrow, they're just gonna start talking.
They're gonna start it.
I would imagine they're gonna start the process tomorrow, but they're not going to make a decision tomorrow.
It's on the agenda to start.
We're gonna have a public hearing.
The organic.
Right, and then you can.
Yes.
Tell us what you think of the final project.
Yes.
Because to.
I just wanna know.
To comment on this part, right now.
They're gonna be, they're gonna review it, that's for sure, will they possibly have a hearing, a public hearing on what they.
No, they don't have to.
Okay.
There's no requirement.
So, come back here and we'll work it on here.
Public hearing is, the required public hearing is before this body.
Yeah, we'll be here.
Doesn't mean the planning board won't have a public hearing, they probably will, but that's up to them, they're not required to have a public.
So, if, it's an F, yeah, okay.
And you're always welcome to send us written input, so.
Well, there's a lot to write, and I don't wanna be writing.
Since I let Peter talk, is there anyone else that very briefly wants to speak?
Thank you for opening the door, Peter. Hello, everyone, my name is David.
Hello, everyone. My name is David.
I can very seldom say no to Peter. I, as, as I'm being asked.
I'm ashamed to say you probably don't know me, though. I've been around for about 15 years. I'm David Carden. I live at 4100 Main Road. And first off, I want to thank the council for taking up this important issue. And also, if there's anybody here, the developers that are trying to provide this kind of energy system for us, because Rhode Island, because Rhode Island has an opportunity to be the first state in the country to be energy-sufficient through solar and wind. I have a background that I won't go into that covers agricultural, climate change, and a collection of other things that are relevant to this issue. My concern is that this ordinance, as it's drafted, without going into the details, doesn't give you the tools you need to make meaningful decisions on these issues. There's not enough detail. There's not enough constriction of the rights of the various parties involved, without saying how I would come out on that. I only wanted to speak this evening, knowing that it wasn't appropriate to go into the details, to say that I think it's really important for this council to have a real focus on getting a document that provides you the kind of definition and the tools you need to make certain we make right decisions for the coming generations. I'm 70 years old. It isn't about me anymore. I have a farm, and I put a solar array on, on my roof. And I did that to preserve the agricultural land as a consequence of what I think to be the real challenges we have ahead. The Imperial Valley's going to stop producing food at some point, and, you know, we really need to be paying attention to that. So, the council has an opportunity to really lead on this issue, in part because Rhode Island is in a position to actually be energy-sufficient. It's an agricultural state, which, of course, is a critical, critical element going forward into the future. And, and so, I would just urge the council, in whatever form, to try to provide guidance to the planning board, to come up with a document that's actually going to give you the detailed information you need. I'll give you an example. I've planted, I know this number. I've planted 90 trees on my property. And, and they're talking tomorrow about a plan to cut down 9,000. I can't keep up with that. I mean, I can plant a lot of trees, and I'm going to. And, of course, we all care about this. I know we all do. So, the other last thing I would say, it's, it's not Tiverton's problem or fault in some respects. The incentives for solar developers in this state are all wrong. You know, they're in an auction process where they're selling their energy. They want to build these arrays where it's the cheapest place to build them. But taxpayers and citizens shouldn't be subsidizing private developers on this issue. I'm very sympathetic to what they want to do. But there's all kinds of brown fields and industrial sites that actually provide opportunities for us to get this right, to preserve the agricultural land and the forests that we have, with some exceptions perhaps from time to time, as the case may be. But the incentives on developers are onerous, and that's something that has to happen at the state level, I believe, not at this level. But we should be aware of that. And I'm not unsympathetic to it, but I do think that the council needs really detailed tools in order to get these decisions correct. And thank you so much for letting me speak for a few moments. If there's anything you think I could ever do to be helpful on this, you call upon me. And I will tell you, I did practice law for a while, as you probably can imagine, but-
Well, if you would like us to get to know you better, there are several positions open on some very important boards, and it sounds like that you would really be helpful to a lot of these boards.
I appreciate that offer. Let me say, the real reason I really wanted to kind of force my way to the stage and drafted behind Peter here was because I do travel a lot.
Oh, okay.
And I might be gone when you're going to have these upcoming hearings. And so, I volunteer myself for private conversations. You can come have a cup of coffee on my farm, and we can talk about these kinds of things anytime. And I will seriously consider, Madam President, your offer if you want to get in contact with me. I think you all know how to find me. So, any event, thank you for that.
And if you would submit written comments on the current ordinance and what you think could be improved, that would be helpful to us, the planning department.
I will undertake to try to do that. What, Michael, what kind of time period do I have for that?
Oh, at least 65 days.
All right. Well, I do some write-ins.
And you have this by a Word document, right? So, if somebody wanted just to mark up a Word document, they could do that.
I'm sure we can get you a Word document.
You can get me a Word document? All right. I don't carry cards anymore. That's part of, because I'm a pensioner now. But can I, well, I don't know if I've got any-
Call the court, we can get to the play, we're going to the public.
I've seen all of you. And thank you so much for letting me speak for a few moments.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else I could talk to? All right. Is there anyone else? Since I've let two speak now, and I want you all to keep in mind that there is going to be a public hearing, and on something that's important, it's not unlike us to have two nights of it because of all the speakers we get. So, when we do have the public hearing, we will make sure everyone gets to speak. But if there's someone who'd like to come up, and like I said, just five minutes, please. Hi.
I'll be much shorter than that. I just want to introduce myself. I'm Michael Marcello. I've been, I've been talking with a little bit. My name's Buzz Becker. I'm from Virginia, actually, but I've been developing here in Rhode Island for the last several years. So, I think I've been trying to help to kind of jumpstart, get the ordinance back on the books, any way I can be helpful with my experience in other towns, in other states, things that have worked, things that have not. Just want to offer myself up as a resource. So, I think I will stay another night. I was just up here for tonight for this, but I might stay another night for the planning commission, if, Mike, if you think that would be a fruitful conversation. Yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a pretty decent draft. A couple of things I would suggest I think you would like to see that maybe other towns have done to some good success, but happy to be a part of the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Buzz has been calling for six months.
Your old friends, Nancy. Anyone else?
I thought I'd get through the nightclub.
I knew you wouldn't.
There was a couple of other times I didn't get up. You know, I hear, you know, I'm more for solar, I'm more for wind. I spent 10 years as a safety director for a company. That's what we did. We're talking $150 million jobs. It was all federal-funded jobs. It was places like Air Force bases, hospitals, you know. So, the federal government's been doing this for a long time. I think people think this is new. I've been with for that company for 20 years. They've been doing this a long time. So, my only suggestion is somehow they figured this out.
And we will, too.
Yeah. So, you may want to look, I don't know if you have any opportunity, look what the federal government's done all these years, as a basis of how to get some of this done, as far as how the ordinance should be written. All I know is, we'd go out and do the engineering studies and then build things, you know. So, they've been doing it a long time. They probably have a good idea how to get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. I'm going to have you just do the next one. We'll be right back.
Now, I have to find my agenda. Here it is. I got it, I got it. Yep. Any other comments for that one before I move on? Okay.
Can we just get a formal motion to refer it to the planning board?
I did like to entertain a motion to refer the draft Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Appendix A, Zoning Article 24, Solar Energy Systems to the Planning Board.
So moved. Second?
I'm going to give this one to Bill. I'll give you the second. He started.
Fine.
In my left ear. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? None? Denise says, I think, well, she abstained, she's not here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, General Business, Item 8A, Councilor Cook requests the council consider amending current committee appointment request form. Donna, just to pull your mic to you, please.
According to the charter-
Here's your mic, Donna.
According to the charter, anyone that applies to be on a committee must be a resident, but they also must be an elector, which is missing from the application form. I think it should be very clear to the applicant that they need to be an elector. So, I'm just proposing, and I put the charter section that's in there, I'm just proposing that we add to the application, I think there's a new application that was added here, and I don't see it on there either, that residents must be electors seeking an appointment. It's that simple on the application.
So, you're suggesting like a question, are you a resident and are you an elector?
No, it just, it just should say-
Put a statement on there?
It already said, on the old one, it says, residents seeking an appointment. All I'm saying is, it should say, residents must be electors seeking an appointment. I'm just adding a little bit.
Is, is one of these the online and-
Well, they, I've got it online, and I guess there's a new one.
This is, this is the web-based one that you can fill out online.
Correct. So, what-
Joan has designed something very special.
So, what the clerk's office has been working on is software from ClerkBase called OnBoard that provides us a management tool for boards and commissions. And part of that tool offers an application. So, we can, the applicants can fill out an online application rather than always going to the manual paper form, because a lot of them have online capabilities, and we're trying to get into the 21st century. So, what I did was, I took the appointment request as it stands today, and I had to modify it a little bit in order to make sense to be an online entry application. So, that's where some of the changes are, and it doesn't match the manual form, because it wouldn't go to the town administrator. It would be, just fill out the form below and submit it, clicking a button. So, I tried my best to follow the existing form, and whatever change you deem necessary for electors, you can add to this, or whether it be a question, it can be a question at the bottom to verify that you are an elector of the town. It doesn't have to be verbiage if you want to highlight it. It could be a, a question at the bottom.
I also think we should put a piece in there, say, per charter. It's not us that are saying that you have to be electors. It's the charter itself, so that people just don't say, the council decided we have to be registered voters. It's, it's in the charter. So, it, I think it should put, whatever we do, we should put it per charter.
So, all you have to do is put residents must be electors seeking an appointment per charter.
Per charter. If you all agree with that, I just don't want people to think it's the council that made this decision. It's in the charter. And we are looking at a couple of recent applicants that, well, one in particular, that's not an elector, but we're working that out.
Right. And in the past, it was always the clerk's office that would confirm that the applicant was a elect, elector of the town.
But so-
So, we have gone through all of the boards and commissions and verified that.
So far, we're good except for one, of working with that individual.
But it's not clear to people, though. Most people might already be, but it, it's not clear.
Right. It needs to be clear on an application. I definitely agree with that. And I think it also needs to be clear that it's the charter that is, is making us do that.
I just want to-
Which I, I agree, they should be electors, but-
I just want to make sure that it's proper grammar. If you include residents must be electors per charter seeking an appointment to, are asked to complete, so-
May I suggest?
Is there two verbs in there in one sentence?
May I suggest?
Joan.
I wrote it down, too, for you, if you can read it.
Just asking.
Perhaps something like to replace that first sentence with, per the Tiverton Town Charter, residents seeking an appointment to a board, committee, or commission must also be an elector of the town of Tiverton, period. And the rest, it's pretty obvious that you're going to write, you're going to apply here. That's what it's for. So, if that's okay, I can give you this, Joan, I wrote it down, as long as you can read it.
Does anyone agree with that, the way that that's stated?
And I have to say, the onboarding software, I was asking Joan some questions about something else, and she and Jeannie sent me the link, and it's fabulous.
It is. And Joan showed it to me in her office the other day. It's quite impressive, and it's very, she has all the members, when they expire, the amount of members each, each committee needs. And it's, it's pretty impressive.
And it does have reports for vacancies, expirations.
Yep.
It has a list of all of the individuals and what boards they're on, and then also this piece. We are getting training this week with the tax assessor so that he can move it into the website environment. So, we're working on it. It's close.
So, I guess we have to have a motion right now to put that verbiage in there.
Can you read that?
As stated.
Can you read it?
Yes.
You can read it. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Oh, Donna, why don't you make the motion?
Oh. Make a motion on my own.
Make a motion.
This is really like an administrative thing that the clerk will do.
All right, so we don't-
We don't think we need to vote on it, because it was just Donna, as I said, on this request, the clerk is going to take your comments, and she's going to make them.
Okay.
She's going to do it.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Donna.
When I, when I'm complete, I'll send you an updated version of the form.
Thank you.
There'll still be a paper version for those who can't, who don't have access?
Yes. If I can also make some editorial changes to that to match the application, the online application form, so they're consistent, then I'll do all of those changes together and get those.
Perfect.
That's administrative.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Donna. The next one's Donna also. Councilor Cook, discussion impossible vote regarding zoning ordinances and use of shipping containers in residential areas as storage units. Donna?
I have quite a few of these in my neighborhood, and I've noticed them around town. I've noticed shipping containers in front and back yards being used in residential neighborhoods. It's unsightly and makes the area appear to be commercial. It seems that placement is in the, at the discretion of the resident. Looking through the code book, zoning Appendix A, I was not able to locate an ordinance on this type of storage. Is there a permit for this or an ordinance? And just a discussion. You can pretty much put them anywhere. I mean, if someone backs one up, just-
This has come up in the past with another building inspector, and my understanding was, he told this person that it was not permitted.
They're everywhere.
I know. And we brought that up at the time, that they, and I think it was even before you.
Well, it had to be before me, because it-
Okay. I think it was before you. But I understood that they weren't permitted. And I don't know if the zoning, he's here, right?
The building, the building inspector.
Yeah. Do you want to make a comment on this? So, so these storage units are being used as sheds, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think they are, storage sheds, whatever.
People find it's more economical to buy a container than it is probably to build a shed.
But it's unsightly if it's in the middle of your lawn.
Well, if that's what they're doing, then there is an ordinance that addresses that.
There is?
Well, basically, you can't have things in the front yard within-
Setbacks.
Setbacks and all that.
This is correct. So, the zoning ordinance, okay, defines what a structure is. It also defines what an accessory structure is, all right? So, so zoning does have some precedence over where an accessory structure can be placed. The building code also has a definition of structure and when a permit is required. Any structure over 64 square foot in footprint requires a building permit. They would have to come to my office first, all right? And then we would determine where they can place this thing. It doesn't matter if it's a steel shipping container, or if it's a shed you buy prefabricated from the Home Depot. It doesn't matter. A structure is a structure is a structure. And again, both in zoning and in the building code, they are regulated.
So, people who have this that don't have a permit, they shouldn't have it. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
They should be permitted.
That they should-
So, all these, I doubt that all these people in Donna's neighborhood has come to you.
So, there are instances where, there are instances where people are moving or doing construction.
That's different. No, no.
No, no, these pods that are on your list here, they are around, and they're in front yards and driveways.
They're downstairs, too.
They are temporary. No, no, they're, they're temporary. But those are temporary structures.
Some of them are.
No, they're there for years.
Well, the ones that say, like, the big pods on them, do people rent those to, for moving?
No, I haven't seen that, but I know what that is. No, these are, they're there.
I know what, our shipping containers are around as well.
What's that, that square footage, what is that in feet?
Eight by eight.
Eight by eight? So, anything bigger than-
Anything bigger than eight by eight is required to get a building permit. But even if it were only 62 square feet, I still believe that pursuant to the zoning ordinance, they would still have to come to us and place it in the right location, okay? Because accessory structure, okay, as defined in the zoning ordinance, is not designated by size. It's ancillary to the main use. So, if you have a house and you have a garden shed, it's an accessory structure.
And so, when you say location, do you direct them to the backyard, or?
I direct, I direct them to what the zoning ordinance requires. So, what we have is, we have a lot, which this table may be, and then we have a front yard and a rye yard and a side yard, okay? And then we have what we call the building envelope. And that accessory structure typically, regardless of the size, 864 square foot, okay, is the largest accessory structure you can put on a property, on any property, without getting a dimensional variance. 864, that's 32 by, 24 by 36. It's like a three-car garage. But even if it were just a small garden shed, you are allowed to put it closer to the property lines as, as it being an accessory structure.
But there are setbacks. There are setbacks, though.
There are setbacks, yes. There are, yeah.
I believe it's five feet.
Typically, five feet for an accessory structure in most residential homes. You are correct, sir.
So, there is a town in Tiverton, I mean, in, there is a town, there's a, there's a town in Rhode Island that I actually know someone who put one of these on his property. And he was visited by their official, and he was told he had to make it look pretty. So, he painted it and painted windows on it and put a roof and made it look like a shed. But apparently, it worked for him better for his tools and whatever he put in there.
Right. But it's, it's, it's still a structure, and it still needs to be permitted.
So-
And it's still, meaning that it needs to be put in the right location. When we talk about what a temporary structure is, that's also defined by the building code. And a temporary structure is one that is in place for no more than 180 days, all right? So, these pods that the administrator had, had referred to generally aren't there for more than 180 days. They're there for a month or two while people are moving, or they had a flood in their basement, for instance.
Right.
We all know that happened just recently. They need a place to put their stuff. Not that we turn a blind eye, but we try and be a little lenient in a situation like that with an, you know, temporary accessory structure. But if you're going to buy a Connex box and But if you're gonna buy a Connex box and drop it in your yard, that's a permanent structure in our eyes. And therefore, you would have to get a building permit, it would have to meet the building codes, and it would have to meet these setbacks. I don't have any jurisdiction over what something looks like, unfortunately, or fortunately, I guess.
Apparently, in Forster, they do, because that's what they made him do.
So what do we do with the ones that are there now that-
Well, I would cite them. When I become aware of a situation that is not compliant with either the building code or the zoning ordinance, you know, I'd send my guy Joe out, okay, to investigate what's going on, and then we'll write him a violation notice and inform them that, A, they need to get a building permit, and second, it has to fall within the required setbacks.
So you pretty much have to have a zoning complaint to even know where they are?
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, even a phone call. I mean, we get phone calls all the time. Hey, this guy's doing this over there, he's putting this fence up, or whatever it is, and, you know, we'll go and investigate. But we don't, I don't say we're going to look for it, we've got plenty to do, all right? But we don't turn a blind eye. When I come across a situation, I keep a little note going, you know, this deck over on the Bogomash, I'm not aware of any permit for that deck, all right? So we come back, we look at it, and then if necessary, we'll send them a notice that they have to come in and get a permit.
And at that time, they may discover to their dismay that you can't put a trap, you know, a box off an 18-wheeler in the backyard.
Well, possibly, yes.
It won't fit.
Yeah, right, right.
So let's say there's 10 people who are watching tonight who have these in their yards, didn't get a permit. They come down, they go through the permitting process. There's not, Donna, I want you to, because I think this is part of the answer to what your original question is. You can't not allow that simply because it's a car, a container.
You are correct, sir. It's a structure, and if it meets the minimum building code requirements for snow loads and wind loads, and it's tied down correctly, and it's in the right location, I cannot-
Yeah, so, but it does have to meet all those other requirements, secure it to the ground, whatever, and all that kind of stuff.
Regardless of what it's constructed.
So Donna, this doesn't necessarily solve your issue. It doesn't say that we can't have those in town. It just says that they have to be properly permitted and properly located and properly done according to code.
There's an office complex in Providence made out of Connex boxes.
Right.
Aesthetics doesn't really enter into it.
Unless there's something in the code that John hasn't talked to us about.
Nothing about aesthetics, for better or for worse.
So I could have one and paint it international orange, and I'm good?
Yes, sir. Yes, you can.
Donna, is there something else, no?
Well, I don't know, I-
And you can have more than one, as long as it-
There's a limit to how many accessory structures you can have. We talk about lot coverage. I talked about that building envelope, there's only so much percentage of the lot that you can cover.
That's important, too, because there's some that has more than one.
Yeah, but it's not saying you need to have more than one accessory structure. It all comes down to the math. You know, what is the percentage of the lot that's covered by imperious surfaces? And that also brings in to play the public works director in his capacity, okay? As far as controlling the runoff water, all right? So if it's a Connex box or if it's a shed, it still has to meet those same parameters. We have to keep the water on the property.
Right.
So there's, there's a bit to it, there's a bit to it, but it's, you know, I mean, it's not rocket science, because I can do it. No, but, you know, a structure is a structure is a structure.
So if Counselor Cook really wanted to, I'll use the term ban these, then we'd have to look at modifying the zoning ordinance?
That's correct. That's correct. It would have to be a council motion to change the ordinance to what we can-
We could say they're not allowed if we want.
You can. You can do anything you want.
I don't know, I guess people would have to see what I'm talking about.
Oh, I think we know what you're talking about, Donna. It's, all I'm saying is, right now, his authority is limited to saying, making sure it meets code, and a structure like that doesn't, in and of itself, not meet code, so we'd have to, if we wanted to do that, we'd have to put specific language in the code that would not allow it.
And some of the areas that you find disturbing, it may not be properly placed, and it may look better if they did it the right way, and that could be it, too. Because I know one in particular, it's on the front lawn. Now that I think about one.
I'm pretty sure the zoning says you can't have that kind of thing in the front yard, right?
I know one in particular.
No, it does specify where an accessory structure can and cannot be placed in the zoning ordinance. So if I become aware of the fact that somebody's got one of these things in their front yard, the first thing I'm gonna do is visit and say, what are you doing, okay? If you're gonna have it here for more than 180 days, all right, then it needs to be a permitted structure, and you have to put it within the parameters that are set forth in the zoning ordinance.
Ones in someone's driveway, it's been there for years.
I don't doubt it, I don't doubt it, but, you know, I need to know about these things, and anything that comes to my attention does get my attention.
It can't go, are you saying it can go in a front lawn? Because I don't believe it can.
I don't know.
It can't go in a front lawn.
So can somebody build a shed in their front yard?
No.
Within certain parameters, yes. When you say front yard, okay, is that the area in front of the front wall of the house? So if I have 25 acres and my house is a half a mile off the street, can I put an accessory structure in the front yard? Technically, yes, but it cannot be within the front yard setback.
So if you're in a 200 by 100-foot lot, and your house is in, you're not gonna be putting it in the front yard?
Probably not gonna fit into the front yard.
No, okay.
Probably not gonna fit at all.
No, we're not.
I think that that's what Donna was just trying, that we have a-
Yeah, we're talking about down the north end also, in those lots on that bit.
Well, when I breeze through some of this recently, pretty much if you're in an R40 zone, you're not gonna have anything in the front yard except the decoration. Black pole.
And it shouldn't be in someone's driveway as a permanent structure.
Not as a permanent structure. Again, probably not, but again, all depends on, you know, like I said, if this is the front yard and the house is set way back, it is in the front of the house, but it's not in the front yard setback, so it still might meet, still might meet the zoning requirements. Might, right? There are many parameters that involve-
Unless it's on wheels and has a license plate on it.
No, I don't go for that. They tried that on me, in Swinburne's, didn't work. Didn't apply.
No.
You pull a license, put a license plate on your fish tank if you want. It doesn't matter.
Okay, so the only thing I can say is, if there is one, then we need to tell.
If you let me know of some concerns that you have, okay, any structure anywhere throughout the town, or vehicles, you know, we're chasing BACOs that are on, you know, residential properties. You can't have a BACO on your resident property.
Don't believe me, you're afraid.
I know about that one.
So we have a camper on our lane. The guys live in a camper on our lane. But that problem is that that's a police matter, it's not a zoning issue, because it's in the public right away. However, like I say, anything that anybody has any concerns, just please, bring it to my office's attention, and we'll do what we can, and if they are in compliance, even though it's an ugly steel box, if it's in the right location and doesn't exceed the lot coverage, there's not much I can do about it.
Unless we change the ordinance.
Unless you change the ordinance.
Donna, are you interested in changing the ordinance?
Do you want to think about it?
I don't know what to do about it, it just looks so awful, and I don't know if, if just how I feel about it is the right way to go. I don't want to micromanage people, but-
I'm gonna go riding around and look. I'll just tell you the truth, I haven't-
Stir up some work.
I mean, there's one in someone's yard that's blue.
I just wanted to see what they look like.
So I don't want to give the council solicitor more work, but would you want Mike to draft something for us that'll at least look at, that might address some of this?
Yeah, I guess he could. I guess I could talk to Mr. Hoyle about it, and, I mean, I see them, I'm like, oh, there's one over there, and there's one over there, and more than you think, you know?
So I guess we would have to, accessory use is defined in the ordinance, we would exclude storage containers as a permitted accessory use.
That's a possibility.
So would those that are there now be grandfathered?
Yes.
Yes, unfortunately. Well, that's-
As long as they make-
As long as they were permitted.
As long as they meet the requirements before.
Right.
Well, if they're not permitted, that's a whole different story.
Right.
That kicks in my situation.
So they're grandfathered in?
If they're not permitted.
If you change the ordinance, right?
As long as they're properly located.
As long as they're properly located, that's-
You can come and get a permit after the fact. They would have to be permitted. But if they're not, I don't know, Mike, if a structure is not permitted, they change the ordinance. Is it grandfathered because it wasn't permitted to begin with? Well, no, I mean, that's a whole can of worms. I gotta assume that these people are not getting permits to drop these Connex boxes in their backyards.
And Donna, you were asking about, like, the water authority. I think there's a difference between, I could be wrong, commercial properties where the business may use those things as opposed to residential properties, or not?
There are parameters in which any property in the town has to work within, commercial, residential, or otherwise. And again, we're talking about where it's located. Is it within the setbacks? Are we exceeding the lot coverage? There's a certain percentage of the lot that you can cover with structures. So, you know, like I said, if somebody came to me and said, I'm gonna put a Connex box in my backyard, and it's gonna fall within the zoning ordinance, it's gonna meet that, I really can't deny it.
My question is, if we decided to change that part of this ordinance that the solicitor just mentioned and outright not allow them, would that also mean not in commercial areas unless we were specific?
They would have to be specific to a lot of them.
Yeah, yeah.
You'd have to exclude it in certain ways.
And a lot of commercial entities like them because they're steel, they're a lot harder to break into.
Right, right, right. And I don't think anybody wants to, in no way of commercial enterprise, to, best that we can.
No, no, I'll just make one comment here. I don't personally want to go off the deep end here and forbid them in town just because they're metal, just because they don't look like a traditional shed, just because they're boxy or any of that. I mean, a shed can be just as ugly as a steel box, Connex box.
My own steel shed.
And that really doesn't enter into the conversation at all.
Okay, so are we gonna move on, or are we gonna-
I was just trying to just tell you what the zoning, so an accessory use which is clearly incidental and secondary to the principal permitted use of the premises or a structure shall be allowed, provided, however, that such accessory use shall be located on the premises to which it applies and shall not be detrimental to or impair adjacent properties, which I guess is a setback requirement, or the neighborhood. So it's kind of broad and detrimental to the neighborhood, but-
Based on that, you could tell them what color to paint.
I guess, well, let's not go there.
Do you want to work with John first, before we look at, try to change it?
Yeah, I don't know what to talk about. Yeah, it's blue. Yeah, it's an 18-wheeler size.
So there, there are 20 and 40 footers.
No, I just Googled Connex boxes. I just, I didn't know what it looked like.
It almost looks like a dumpster.
They're shipping containers. And the issue is, there is, because of the trade imbalance, there are more of those available in this country than there are going overseas, and they're cheaper to buy than building a shed. So people buy them, but not everybody likes them. So it's only those people who tolerate the looks of them in their yards.
They put those on, like, flatbed trucks or on?
They haul them, they go on ships, but they're hauled on flatbed trucks.
You just pick them up, put them on trucks.
If you go to-
Everyone just stack on these big cargo ships.
The big ships. They bring them up, they fill them up, they bring them up, and they load them onto the big shipping.
You can buy them, probably.
And that's what they call shipping containers, and that's what's on top. This is on eBay, 3500.
All right, so Donna, we're gonna have you work with John and then get back to his end. Maybe even if you decide you want to change the ordinance.
Yeah, I'll talk to him about it. I'll show him a couple, maybe it's not a problem. I don't know. I just was, like, wondering what the deal was with this thing.
Is that all right, John, if you work with Donna?
That'd be great.
Okay.
You don't want to flame me.
Yes. All right, thank you.
John, I wasn't here for your interview. I was visiting my daughter, so nice to meet you in person.
Nice to meet you, folks. Thank you. Have a fine evening.
Thank you.
Counselor Cook, discussion and possible vote regarding platform pass, pass, pass Caso?
Yeah, it's not Picasso.
I know, I don't want to say Picasso. If there is a need for a zoning ordinance or be subpart of a short-term rental ordinance.
Yeah, I was looking, I was looking through a bunch of stuff, and all of a sudden, I was like, what is this? And it was kind of interesting. I guess it's causing all kinds of problems. It's called fractional homeownership, modeled to make a second homeownership possible for more people. Picasso buys a house and lightly furnishes it, furnishes it, and then creates an LLC for it. They divvy up ownership of this corporized house into eight fractions and sell these shares on their websites. Picasso argues not an STR nor timeshares, but co-owners of an LLC means they don't have to pay typical taxes on an STR. I put the article, actually, in here. It was very, I don't know, it's kind of troubling. But anyway, I put this in here. Oh, what's this? I've got a planning board.
Yeah, it was on there. I noticed that this morning.
I think we have that. It's a duplicate.
Yeah. All right, so Mike, do you know about this?
First, I mean, I saw it when I was put on the agenda. We had our agenda meeting. Off, just quickly, because they're owners of the building, right, or even fractional owners, it's a little different than an STR, because STR is short-term rentals, and they're not the owner, right? We had an owner-occupied requirement, so they would meet the requirement of an STR because they own it, right? They wouldn't be regulated by the STR because it's owner-occupied. Every time that someone sits, you know, every time that someone's in this place, they're owner-occupied. It was a creative way of getting around, I guess, regulations of short-term rentals. They actually own the property, even though they don't, they own a fractional share.
That's what their attorney argued also.
It makes sense. It's creative. I give them credit for that. So I guess the question, Donna, would the STR ordinance that's being considered, touch these, regulate these? No.
Okay, that was my question, is probably gonna be coming this way.
Tiverton, I don't know. I guess we wouldn't know, really.
It would be hard to regulate, and what are we gonna regulate here?
Yeah, it would be hard to regulate, Donna.
Wouldn't it be on the property card?
I don't know. It'd be LLC, it'll be, you know, ABC LLC.
I went on that website, and they had the states listed. It was mostly Florida, California, west coast, but they did say that they are shopping all over the country and the world.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, could, could.
Creative way to get around timeshare rules, too.
Yeah, that's what they do.
So should we look at it as a separate piece at some point?
It could. I just don't, we're chasing a problem that we're not here yet, so. I think we have a more immediate problem with STRs.
We don't have authority.
And we might not have authority at all, exactly, because they own it, Donna, right? They're owners. They have property rights in that property, so.
I think we need to be conscious that it might happen here, and when it does, if we decide there's a problem with it, then we move on. But we may never even find out.
Well, and note that most of these that, in the article you gave us, which I appreciate the research you did, Donna, seem to be fairly well-off neighborhoods, so, not that we don't have fairly well-off neighborhoods, we do, but I think it's more limited than some other cities, big cities around the country and the like.
Yeah. Well, I thought it was important to talk about.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Interesting article.
Okay, the discussion and vote to approve National Grid joint poll petition upon contest nec roll poll 121-15.
So Grid wants to raise the height of the poll there, so we're not opposed to it. I'd like Rick to take a look at it. There's no issue with it. It's common for them to come forward with these kind of issues around town.
Any questions or comments?
With approval?
Do you have a second?
So moved.
Most of them made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Administrator Carter, approval of DPW Director Rogers employment contract, August 8, 2021, and ending August 7, 2024.
So as in your last council meeting, we had an executive session, we did the evaluation of it. I kind of gave you a prelude to what was coming. This is the formalization of that contract. There's really no substantive change, other than some salary increase for 2% of retroactive for the year that just passed, and the current year coming forward.
Any questions? Like to entertain the motion?
Moved.
Second.
So the motion is to approve, approval of DPW Director Rogers employment contract, August 8, 2021, through August 7, 2024. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Congratulations, Rick.
Thank you, Administrator Carter.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Good job.
Don't spend it all in one place, Rick.
Administrative Carter, discussion and possible vote to ratify tax stabilization agreement with Tiverton Power LLC 305 Parkus Way.
So this is an agreement that we had talked about quite some time ago, of stabilizing the power plant's tax issues because of the fluctuation that can happen with that particular entity. The council had given us some direction to move forward. We adopted all the recommendations of the council. Put it forward. It's been with their legal counsel for a little while. We've had some very minor tweaks in language back and forth that would really no substitute, and they are ready to sign.
Any questions, Donna?
I have, I have quite a few. Annual tax amount, I'm wondering.
You have a page one?
Annual tax amount is $1,100,000. I'm not understanding the formula times K slash L. I'm not understanding why we're using the consumer index, price index for urban wage earners and clerical workers.
So it's the same CPI adjustment that we've been using for the last 20 years for them.
Okay.
It's the same one that we've always used with it.
All right, I still don't understand it.
It's a Boston formula that's created, and it's a standard that most, you just don't create this formula out of thin air. There is a standardized formula that is used in Boston, and that's the formula that we use. So that we, everybody knows what it is that we're going to be adopting.
All right, so what I'm wondering is.
And that's how it's been spelled out over the years. That's the nomenclature for it. That's not new at all. That was in the last stabilization agreement.
Okay. So when this formula is used, how does that work out? For clarification of how it's paid every year, I'm not understanding. Do we lose money every year? Does it, how does that work out?
We've actually made money every year. We've generated more money. That, that, it's, if I remember correctly, when we first started with the power plant, I believe their annual payment was about $500,000 a year. The last payment of the last fiscal year was $840,000. And it, and that was only because of the creep of the inflationary index. And that's what CPI is. It's an inflationary index. There are a number of ways to figure that. There are a number of different formulas. This is a specific one that we have used and always used, and we don't want to deviate from what we've been doing.
And, okay. Go ahead, Donna, I'm sorry.
Did you want to ask a question?
Oh, I want to wait till you're done. That's okay.
So how is this going to be paid?
So they'll look at, after the first year of payment, they'll look at the CPI adjustment that will need to be made for FY '23, and then FY '24, FY '20, and they apply it to the base year. So the base year is 1.1 million. So the adjustment will be an increase. It'll either be zero. It'll never go down. It'll be either zero or up to, with a maximum, I think there's a maximum, I think a three. I think there was a maximum. No, there is no maximum.
There is none.
No, so most of them will maximize at 3%.
There's no maximum.
So there is no maximum.
If inflation goes to 8%, they're going to pay 8%.
They'll pay 8%.
So it's actually a good.
Whatever the CPI is for that particular year.
And Boston, generally, the Boston CPI is higher than like a Rhode Island CPI. Like, they use Boston because it's a, it's a bigger labor market, it's more expensive for.
It's an industrial market.
Industrial market.
All right, the other question is, is philanthropy. Where is that money going?
It'll come here and the town council will make that decision. So there were specific projects. So we used some examples when we were going through this process, whether it's some money for the dog park, whether it's money for the town farm renovation, or it's some other project that the town council is entertaining, would like to have some. The fog would be enough. So, but these would be initiatives that the council would discuss as to where those monies would go. That money would not go into offset taxes. It wouldn't go into, it's, your.
It's a philanthropy.
Right, so we, we, we have some projects that we are asking people to support money to. As a town council, you could say, let's put some money towards this project from this fund. It's a separate fund that would not.
And I also think it's important that a plaque, whatever we do use this money for, we put a plaque.
It's also Tiverton, Tiverton's power, because they're a big conglomerate, that they, they don't have the ability to be here in town, like some of the other entities, to say, we want to contribute to the town and some of these other events. We, we just don't have the ability to do that, other than doing it this way.
Okay.
And to please recognize us when you do use our monies for, and we would do that.
Okay.
We do that with everyone else.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Mike?
Just quick to follow up, and one of you two may, may or may not know this. Has the CPI gone down during the past tax agreement?
No.
Okay, so it's always at least stayed level or risen?
It's never gone.
No.
Dave, thank you. I did see you there.
No, he got that back. He already came back. No, he just got back.
It is a five-year agreement.
It's a five-year agreement, okay.
So, one of the reasons why it's a five-year agreement is because the energy market is fluctuating so much that they didn't want to be locked into a 10-year agreement because these things get bought and sold all the time as well. So they wanted to, you know, we actually suggested a five-year agreement because it's better for the town. Because if the value, if the power, if the need for extra, extra, that's an excess plan, right? So if they have to turn, produce more electricity, that plan becomes a lot more valuable to them as well as to us. So we didn't want to lock it for 10 years. So that's why.
And, which goes to paragraph five, if for whatever reason they want to come to us and seek an increase or however that has to get done, might not be us in their megawatts.
Correct.
We get additional tax money when they get up to 325 and then.
So they were to expand, which they have talked about in the past. They're not there right now because they're trying to figure out what the market is.
But that's no different than if you were, if like you have a house today and you put a garage on, it would tax you for the extra garage. So we just wanted to put it in there. If you guys expand, you're going to have to pay the extra taxes on that expansion.
Yep, no, that's perfect.
And the potential is great because they do sit on a gas pipeline, so.
Yep, yep, and then the last, that philanth, we should look at that philanthropy really as a grant.
It is.
Just like we do any other grant.
The way we treat it is.
And it clearly says the town should have the full right. That's the town council, so.
And just for the audience at home, the first year of this agreement gives us $260,000 more than last year, and we get a $100,000 kicker for what we're calling a grant.
Next two years, for two years.
Yeah, but first year.
In year one.
So the town's going to see $360,000 more from the power plant.
Correct.
Win-win.
Okay.
Move approval of the tax stabilization agreement with Tiverton Power LLC 304 Progress Way.
And I would like to recognize Dave Roberts for the work that he did put into this. He did some pretty good work.
I was looking for it before.
He's hiding behind two posts.
No, you reappeared. All right, so I have a motion. I have a second.
Who's second?
Second.
That's why I'm asking. A second, okay. Any further discussion?
Keep moving right along.
All those in favor? Administrator Carter, Fire Chief Rymos, discussion and possible vote on authorization of purchase agreement for the Rostenbauer with fire truck.
Love to get all the tough names.
I know.
Rosenbauer, so even I.
I practiced at home, too.
Even I had trouble with that for a while.
I'll have you do that tomorrow with $50,000 at deposit.
So, and I'll clarify a little bit more. This truck is a demo truck, which we've all talked about throughout the process. The original truck that we were looking at acquiring was sold out from underneath this right after the financial town referendum. So we searched around and we found this, this other truck that was just recently built that's been on demo going around. It doesn't have a lot of use, but what will happen is after we encumber this and go out and sign the purchase order, this truck will be obligated to Tiverton. It will go back to the factory, and it'll be made to factory specs. They'll take everything out of it that's been brakes, tires, the whole works. It'll be warranted as if it was brand new. It's a very significant savings for the town. This is a 1.1 to 1.2 million dollar vehicle. We're getting it for $900,000. We have $50,000 that the people appropriated at the FTR, which we'll use. We did commit to putting this on time payments because at the time, we didn't know what we were doing, whether we would even get casino money again or gaming money. So whether or not in the future the council looks at the funding of that, I currently have Denise Soret, the treasurer, looking at financing with a non-prepayment penalty if possible. So that we, if we do go down the road and you do want to use gaming money down the, we wouldn't hopefully be penalized and we could pay it off. But in the meantime, we are going to do this. I will give you one other piece of note that I've been working on. I'm trying to get USDA to maybe fund a third of it, which I don't have any guarantee of this, but we're working our way through this. So there's a number of other capital needs that I'm trying to work with USDA about putting a grant forward. No different than what we did with the police cars. It would be very similar. I don't know if this will actually qualify, but we are working our way through it right now. So we are trying to, everything that we can to try to minimize the amount of exposure for the taxpayers. This is an excellent piece of apparatus. The guys did a really good job vetting this thing out. And I would, with all the work that we've gone through getting to where we are, I think this would be a great asset for us to encumber right now and go through the process of financing.
Oh, we also put this on the budget for the people to vote for.
We did.
Because we didn't feel that we should use that capital money with such a big purchase like this.
Right. Well, at the time, we didn't know what we were going to have anyhow.
Right, but we needed the people to say, yes, we, because this ladder truck has been controversial since I was elected ten years ago.
I want to clarify, it's a pumper with a ladder on it. We need a pumper very badly.
And I have to tell about 100 people that call me that, but we've tried by ladder trucks since I was first on in 10 years ago, and we have never been able to do it. So thank, thank everyone involved that this is happening. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Motion made. Second, is there any discussion?
My discussion is the $850,000.
The what?
The balance, the balance.
$850,000 balance. I'm just still looking at, I'm still, I'm still looking at section 203, over $500,000. The voter's supposed to say that you can spend that money.
They did.
They did. On the budget.
They said 50,000.
No, it's 10.
It was a 10-year acquisition, the first year being 50,000. And we were very clear that this was going to be a million dollars.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Because I did look into that because there was a.
No, we had a number of public hearings about this in the entire budget season. We went through this. Believe me, this is not something that we're surprised on anybody.
That's, that's the reason that we took it out when we were looking at that capital fund.
Correct.
We took it out because of that reason.
That was the only thing we left in the capital fund.
Well, we, we didn't use that special capital fund.
No, we didn't use municipal capital at all.
Right, we, and we put it back into the budget, right.
We put it out to the voters.
And we explained that this was going to be a 10-year process.
Right.
Because at the time, we did not have any resolution with the gaming money from the state lottery commission.
All right, so I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. And just to mention, we told Fire Chief Rymos he didn't have to come tonight.
No, he's on vacation. I really felt kind of awful bringing him back.
I didn't want him to stay just for this, so.
It's a long drive to go back and forth from northern Maine. I mean, he's way up there.
Administrator Carter, discussion and possible vote to ratify IBPO Local 406 Contract, Article 6, Section 1, regarding a management rights issue and a memorandum of understanding concerning life insurance. Chris?
So it's, on page eight, it's section, well, 1A is the language that we all agreed to during the, and the, unfortunately, our president of the union was out on family medical leave during, for quite a while, and this took a little bit of time to get resolved. He's in full agreement. This is what we discussed. This is what he had in his notes. It's what Tim Cavassa had in his, it's what Bruce had in his and mine as well. And the language on the MROU for the life insurance is, we all agree that that's what we agreed to. That we would, we would investigate and we would have an answer by December, or January, I think, January. But the, but the town is not committed to anything with the MRO. So those are the two pieces that the council has already ratified the entire agreement except for those two items because they weren't vetted by the president and the balance of the union. That has subsequently taken place.
I was on the negotiation team because it was very well spelt out for all of us in that this was coming back.
So now this, so we can sign all the contracts. They'll have, I want, they want to get copies to all the union members, which is, you know, appropriate, and it's what we use for billing purposes, to have a signed agreement that's in full. So now this contract is fully ratified after your vote.
Like to entertain a motion?
Moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion being made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Administrator Carter, discussion and possible vote on authorization to enter to agreement for algae control and watershed management with the city of Far River and Towne Westport. If I ever will be members, this was something that Representative Edwards came and said.
He did, and I had, it took me a little bit of time to contact the right person, but I did get ahold of him. This agreement doesn't obligate the town of Tiverton to financially commit to anything. It is, it's an agreement to work together, and in spirit of that, again, this week when I meet with USDA, I am going to ask them about using clean water monies to help fund this on behalf of Tiverton, at least through the first phase. We agree that Tiverton's watershed area is, impacts that water reservoir. We also buy water from our North Tiverton Water Authority and our Stonebridge from Far River, so it does have a major impact on our constituents in town to have clean water. I don't think this is a big lift, and all three communities, I believe, are in agreement with move forward. You can tell by the original date on this, it was back in 2018, that we have changed that, and I did make the respective changes that you are a town council, not a board of selectmen, so.
Any, go ahead.
So just one thing under implementation, I don't think we can do it tonight because it's not on the agenda, but we have to appoint one person?
Oh, we can, we can do that after the fact. When all three communities have signed, we can do that.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions?
Move approval?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Council Perry, discussion and possible vote on volunteer appreciation day. And we used to do this.
Yes, Madam President, that's why I put it on the agenda, because it used to be done years ago, and I just think it would be nice to show our employees and our committee members that we appreciate what they do and the time they give to the different committees. And whether it be coffee and donuts, or whether it be some kind of a brunch, I just think that we should try to do something to show our appreciation for what the community does and what our employees do for the town of Tiverton.
The only thing I suggest is we used to do it at the senior center, and it wasn't big enough for everybody to.
Well, we could always go to Longplex.
Yes.
Be under 1,000 people, right?
You know, we have 150 volunteers, crying out loud. And how many town employees do we have?
The senior center was a little bit too small.
Well, and especially with COVID, we don't want to.
So I'm not sure where we could have it. The library, that's just a small.
So honestly, I don't think, I think Joe's idea might be the best. It's the biggest place for COVID.
Longplex.
Yeah, if we talk to Jim and.
What do you think of Denise's house?
Oh, it's a Joe's house, yeah. The pool's closed, though, so.
You know, and I would, I would think that would include also the school department.
We could, yeah, but we need a big place.
That's why I'm saying, I, you know, I would like to include everybody.
You could probably use the town of Tiverton High School gym.
Yeah, you could use the high school.
Good ball of shot.
But I'd just like to see, you know, us do something.
A perfect place would be Sandy Woods, but.
That's even for that many. I think it only holds 100.
All right, never mind. All right.
Yeah, Sandy Woods, I don't think it'd be big at all.
So Joe, would you like to be on the committee to?
Yeah, I don't think it's that.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll be on the committee.
I'll help you.
Thank you.
And.
Anybody else who wants to help?
Chris.
I was already going to do one for the employees, but it's, it just didn't have the wherewithal for the whole thing. You gotta figure we'd do two, one for volunteers or at least recognize those at another time, but.
Why don't you do it for everybody? Then the volunteers can meet the employees and, and might, you know, help bring everybody together. Well, that was a problem last time. They wanted to bring their spouses and they couldn't because there was not enough room. But if we have a big enough venue.
Yeah, I, I don't see why not, because the spouses put up with the aggravation, going to the meetings and, and, you know, interfering with their lifestyle, so I think.
Maybe one of the spouses might meet everybody and say, wow, I'll volunteer for something.
Yes.
No, really. It might be a way to recruit people, so. All right, so Joe, I'll help you work on that. That'll be a fun thing that I get to do.
Yeah.
And we'll work with Chris.
Okay.
Is that all right with everyone?
My buddy Bill, we'll have a barbecue, Bill. How's that?
You got my vote, then.
All right, thank you.
Bill is going to dress up as the Green Arrow.
No, he's going to be chef.
I'm not trying to influence you, Bill.
Green Arrow. All right, and now it's me and comments and discussion. Administrator Carter, updated casino gaming revenue survey.
So we put together this survey. It was a collaborative effort between Council Burt, Stugil Philin, myself, and Chief Jones to try to, and I think we did, people are going to say I'm wrong, but I think we did a fairly decent job of trying to put something out there for people to reply to that didn't allow commentary that we knew we would get some feedback that we probably didn't want to get. But hit the topics that really, I think people are concerned with. We have gaming money, so what do we do with it? You know, and we tried to break it down into, should it, you know, I know there was some topographical stuff like your name and your email, and basically, you know, the name was really, even though it was required, people put. the name was really, even though it was required, people put in a first name, they put in taxpayer, they put in, you know, whatever they wanted to, there wasn't any requirement, they had to actually put their own name. Email was only so that we could try to track, so that there weren't a bunch of duplicates. And I did some demographics as far as age grouping went, and of the 75 replies, we have two are in their 20s, 10 are in their 30s, 20 are in their 40s, 8 are in their 50s, 19 in their 60s, 12 in their 70s, 4 in their 80s, and one in their 90s. It was actually 99. Which, you know, it's a pretty good representation of, you know, various age groups, it wasn't all like one, all young kids, or all, you know, people didn't have kids in the system. And then we asked some very specific questions. We explained that the town of Lincoln went through a process, and they wanted to, we wanted to, before we used any monies, it should be audited before we used it, and it would only be used for FY '21 after, after the audit is complete, and we wanted to have like some level of agreement. And so it wasn't like yes or no, it was, do you strongly agree that we should use audited monies before we do, have the money in hand and have it audited? And 54% of the people, 41 strongly agreed, 22 agreed, 8 undecided, 2 disagreed, and 2 strongly disagreed. So by and large, people agree that, you know, there should be the use of audited monies, and you should have the money in hand. We asked of the gaming money, should we be able to use it for any annual operational cost? 38 of the 75 said yes, or 50.7%, 37, or 49.3, said no, so it's kind of a 50/50. But it's just for use, to use as a bar, or as a guide, to give you some judgment as to, you know, and we can keep the survey going until we actually have the public hearing on the, when you...
September 20th isn't about that, though.
No, it's not.
Well, it helps inform them.
Right.
It helps, yeah, like, it's the money that we're spending.
Well, we can keep the survey going...
Certainly till after that, so we get more ideas.
So, we asked if operational costs should be funded using gaming money, what percentage of said revenue would you apply towards annual operating costs? 25%, 20%, 15%, 10%, 5%, or some other item? Or no operational, I meant. So 26 people thought that 25% should be used, 9, 20%, 3, 15%, 6, 10%, 2, 5%, and 29 said no operational cost at all. So it's, it does kind of marry up with, should we or shouldn't we use it? So it's like a 50/50. So we also asked of the amount of what we just talked about, using for operation costs, you'd think the funds should be allocated between town and school. So how would you go about doing that? So, was best used to be determined by the town council, was 14 people, 18%, 50/50 town school was 17 people, so 22%. 6% town, 40% school was 2 people, at 2.3, or 2.6%, 6% school, 40% town was 4 people, at 5%. 75% town, 25% school was 6 people, 75 school, 25 town were 10. And then 100% town was 5, 100% school was 7, undecided was 6, and other, and there was really no place to put your amount, was at 4. So there is a pretty good breakout, as, you know, for, there are varying views as to how this money should be allocated. So there's no one dominant that says, "This is it." So if the casino gaming revenues are set aside for the purpose of funding the town and school capital projects, how important is the system be set up to prioritize those particular expenditures? By and large, 57 of the 75 people thought it was very important that they be prioritized. So 76% of the people. Important was 11, moderately important was 5, and then somewhat and not important at all were 1 each. So it's a pretty significant number to say that you really need to prioritize these Then we asked some, kind of, a question about the, there's been this talk about a deficit, structural deficit over at the school. So if you're going to use the money for, for operational costs, how should that be done? Should it be like 100%, should it be 80%, 60%, 40%, 20%, or no, no use at all for the structural deficit? So it turned out that 25 people thought that it should be 100% funded, 6% thought it was 80%, 6 was 60%, 9 people thought it was 40%, and 6 thought it was, should be at 20%, and 23 people thought there shouldn't be any use at all. So, again, the top and the bottom, it is fairly equal, but there are some in the middle that do believe some of this money should be used to help with the structural deficit.
Excuse me, what did structural deficit, you talk about the bonds?
No, this is, the schools have been intimating that they have like a $1.4 million internal structural deficit in their operational budget. This came out throughout the budgetary process with all the budget hearings, and they actually, they had been before us to actually use, they have intimated that we should use some of the gaming money to fund their structural deficit. And I, we understand that that issue would just create an ongoing issue, because it would be a one-time offset to help mitigate that structural deficit, but that structural deficit will be there if that money doesn't get supplied year after year after year. So that, we understand that that's, you know, an issue, we just wanted to know from people what they thought.
Is it, is it part of the MOE? Would it be part of the MOE?
It would be part of the MOE.
See, they don't understand that.
But that was explained in the question.
No, it was explained in the question.
And we talked about this so many times.
We did.
I mean, and a bunch of community members.
No, I mean, I think these are very fair questions about that, I mean, some people, I've gotten some criticism, they thought this was, you know, meaningless, but it, you know, I think it's important to at least ask some of these questions, and if there are more questions we should ask, you know, we've, we've heard many times, including, I've seen posts about us not being transparent with this, but we've had so many discussions, so many public input sessions, plus this, I think it's, I'm hard pressed to know how much more transparent we can be. So there are a couple more questions, I'll get to them quickly. One was of the gaming money, the town is actually operating on a 3% annual restricted reserve for our general fund. And if we were to use any of the gaming money to help bring that 3% up to, let's say, 10% but you did it over time, maybe it was a quarter percent per year, half percent per year, in order to help, you know, put the town on a more stable footing. 63% of the people, 49 of the 75, thought it was appropriate, that was important. 26 people, 34% did think it was, as important. Of the, another question we asked, would you support using the gaming casino monies to fund a community-wide economic development assessment? Again, a very high number, 47 people, 62.7% thought it was appropriate, 28 people were not so enamored with it. And, let's see, we asked another question, some residents believe all gaming funds should go towards direct reduction of property tax. Some believe gaming funds should be used to pay for acute long-term capital costs, infrastructure needs, town and school equipment apparatus as indirect tax relief, and others fall somewhere in between. So we broke it down into four categories. Gaming revenue should be used only for town and school capital projects would create an indirect property tax relief. 23 people, or 31% thought that that was appropriate. Gaming revenue should be used for town and school capital projects as indirect property tax relief, and considerations should be made to use some of the revenue to increase restricted reserves in major emergencies. 29 people, or 39% of the people, thought that was important. Gaming revenue should be used for town and school capital projects as indirect tax relief should be made to use for the increased restricted reserve, major emergencies, and some limited tax, direct tax relief. There were 12 people who thought that was important. And then there were 10 people who were undecided. So, strong indication that people really want to make sure we can get to a reach capital reserves and true emergency issues. And that was the gist of what the survey was about. I mean, I thought it was a fairly well-rounded number of questions to put out there. We tried not to sway anything through the questions, I think we tried to vet that fairly well, and we tried to represent as many different sides in the questions as we could.
And it's still up, so anyone listening...
No, no, it's absolutely still up, it's under, you can find it on the town website, it's on, I know it's on the recreation website, it's on the town police website, and it's on...
Library?
The library, and I think the Fire Department CMA website.
And I know I sent it to Jerry.
Right, and it's a QR code you can email to anybody, and it's on, you know...
I suggest more people get online and do this, so that we get more public input, and we are...
And I will say, of the numbers, just so I can make it clear, there is only one council member who is, and it was because Mike helped me put this together, so Mike, Chief, and I were the first three people who did it, and we're trying to make sure it worked right.
Right, so...
So, and I, well, I answered as best I could, and I know that Mike probably did as well, but we didn't put in duplicates of, you know, we didn't go back and use different names or anything like that, so it's...
Which we were afraid might happen.
No, it's not.
Chris, I thank you for all your help with that, and I want to thank Stu and the chief as well with that. Can we get, can you do our packets for the next meeting?
Yes, I can. And I'll get you a copy of this, so you can take a look at it. You'll see that the reporting, I mean, this is a different survey program that I wasn't really used to. I had to go actually manually tabulate the numbers out of it. It gives you the number and a percentage, but you have to click on it each bar to get it, so it doesn't like print it for you. But it, I'll show you, actually I can give you access to the actual program, so...
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Clerk Shabbett, completed forms of town administrators' performance evaluation